7:00 PM, having arrived. I request everybody's attention and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
City Council members, Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Partially here.
Hershey?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. I would now entertain action with respect to approval of minutes of previous meeting.
I'll move approval of those minutes.
Second?
Minutes have been -- approval has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed. Okay. Are there at this time any additions to the agenda requested? Okay, hearing none. Presentations and public input. Are there other presentation, formal presentations at this time? Okay. I have just one public input slip, and this is from Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, and does not choose to address us, but states that continual concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. If there's no other public input desired, we'll move on to staff report. Are there staff reports at this time? Okay, we hear that there are none.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Staff?
Ah, okay, sorry.
It's been fast enough.
Sure.
Good evening. I just wanted to go over a couple of the highlights from the business development report which should be in your packet this evening. We've had a lot of activity since I came on board. I'll be three months in November, and I tell Brandon I'm really pleased and thrilled with all the calls that keep coming in with people thinking of starting businesses and interested in Urbana. So, a couple of the highlights I wanted to go over. Obviously, you know, New Med was a big wow on New Year's Day and with the rolling out the green carpet and everything. We got some great press for Urbana, and they're doing, they seem to be doing very well. So, I'm watching them on social media. They're communicating with their customers about their supply and demand, and so it'll be interesting to watch that market as we move along and see what we can do to help them be successful. In downtown Urbana, Nifty Nook is a group of 20 artists that pulled themselves together over the holiday and had a pop-up shop in Betsy Hunter's location. They did so well and had such great support from customers that they have signed a one-year lease at a permanent location upstairs at Enchanted Alley, so Enchantment Alley, sorry. Judy Lee is leading the charge for that group, and she is a little dynamo. So, if you get a chance to go over there and introduce yourself, I'm sure she'd love to meet you. We'll be watching them and supporting them as they move along. We had a ribbon cutting for Transcendence Broadcasting over the holidays. This is a couple who's in the media business, and they have actually relocated from Chicago to Urbana and relocated their business. So, they'll be one to watch. They're already working with UP TV to get some of their, some of their work on our public television, and so they'll be working on projects and keeping us posted as they move forward with that. Karma Trade is another small business that's located in Colab, a young lady who is helping people repurpose clothing by buying and selling online and at pop-ups and events. So, she is a sustainable business and working to be that way. So, a very young entrepreneur who we're starting to work with a little bit more. Best of Africa Food Store, they had a second expansion later in the year, and the owners have been nominated for a national small business award. So, that could really be great for a business in Urbana to receive a national award and get the recognition from that. They're also providing office space for the Congolese community of Champaign County, which is going to pull that community more into our, into our, into our city. So, that'll be really great, too. We had the opportunity to meet the new owner of the CU Jiu-Jitsu that's moved into Lincoln Square Mall. He's very excited to have the additional space. He's already working on building his membership to provide those services. So, we'll be keeping an eye on him to make sure he's successful in that new location. And then up on North Lincoln, it's an area I'm becoming more and more familiar with. We're seeing lots of great things happening there. The Urbana Garden Hotel has recently rebranded as a Radisson, and their new sign is up. We stopped in and talked to the owners and hope to maybe have a luncheon or event there in the future. They were very welcoming. The O'Connell Lodge up on North Lincoln is also under new ownership, and the gentleman who's taken ownership of that is interested in sprucing up the property and making some changes there. Very interesting guy with ties in Research Park, so he's a great connection for us to make. And then finally, the building at 1111 Kenyon Road, which formerly housed the National Council of Teachers of English, has been purchased by a new professional business that we should see some great new employment numbers in that office with hopefully filling it up and expanding to more locations. So, we'll be keeping you posted on that as it moves along, too. Just a few other things on the reports, on the charts you see on the back. You can probably see from the lines on the square footage that numbers are down for single-family homes, fairly low historically. But I brought some new information that I was going to share at our next meeting when we're going to do a year-to-date report. This is some data that we collect by tracking the new building permits in, we track them from the News Gazette, but it's all building, new building permits in Champaign, Urbana, Savoy, and Mohammed. And we will be reporting this with the Enterprise Zone meeting later this week. But you can see across the board since 2015 that housing, new building permits for single-family residents are down for the whole county. So, it's not simply Urbana that's experiencing that. It's everyone except perhaps Mohammed. But interestingly, Urbana is, has an increased, slightly increased share in that percentage of new housing starts. So, even though the numbers are down, we are still holding our own and maybe even slightly improving in the number of housing for building permits for new single-family residents. So, this is a trend Brandon and I will be watching, maybe even doing a little more research on to see how widespread this is and maybe what's causing it, the downswing in housing. And you can also see back to the council permit, the last, or the council report, that on the last chart, housing sales were also down through November in Champaign County. So, it's a trend we want to keep, and I didn't go say trend, it's something we want to keep an eye on and see what's going on. So, we'll be having our TIF Joint Board of Review and Enterprise Zone meetings this Thursday. So, if there are any questions you guys have for me, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Jared?
Hey, Stephanie. Question I had, always interested in things happening in downtown Urbana. Have we heard any news on Cone Building and what's going on in there?
I will probably refer that back to Brandon if you don't mind. Oh, sorry.
There's a lease sign for a Japanese restaurant, and Dan Maloney is currently, has a building permit pulled to address a whole, a number of issues in the building. An elevator servicing three floors. I believe they built out restrooms in the back that would service the current tenant and future first-floor tenants, and I think they're still working through some hood and HVAC-related issues before they can hand things over to the tenant.
Because I'm not mistaken, they, he redid the two fronts where the vehicle struck the building, right?
In addition to repairing the damage from the, from the vehicle striking it, he also, yeah, completed new windows and entrances for the, I guess, the bays on the front of the building. The easternmost bay, and I believe part of the, of the center bay are where we would expect the Japanese restaurant to move in.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Are there other questions or comments on business report? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
The next item is Resolution Number 2020-01-007R. This comes from IT regarding upgrading area-wide record management system.
Good evening, everyone. This resolution is to adopt, to allow us to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office. The, the background to this is that the city of Urbana has supported for many years the police record system that's been used by Urbana, by Champaign, by the University of Illinois Police, by the Brantool Police, and the Sheriff's Office. On January 1st of 2021, there will be a new standard format that all police agencies around the country are supposed to comply with. So, those changes require software programming which would be performed by city of Urbana staff as part of our support for the software. So, we have to do this work anyway. However, the great news is that the Sheriff's Office was eligible for a grant to help offset the costs of this transition. So, in this case, we have a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office. They are the recipients of the grant. We, the city's IT staff, are the subcontractor doing the work. So, we will be providing invoices to the Sheriff's Office of our time spent on this work, and they will be seeking reimbursement for the feds and then paying us from that reimbursement. So, that is essentially the, what you're being asked to approve is this relationship where we are the subcontractors to the Sheriff's Office for this grant.
Okay. I would entertain either discussion or a motion. Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Sure.
So, your memo really, it surprised me how many hours you expected perhaps to have to employ to make these corrections, and you said--
We like to say enhancements. These are not corrections, it's a, it's a change. They're moving the goalposts on us, so to speak.
Yeah. So, are you going to be collecting a new sort of data or a wider range of data in the new program? Is that the aspect of what's happening here?
It's the same data. What happens is the way that we're reporting it is changing. Currently, in the methodology that we follow now, we provide summarized counts. So, we might provide a count of thefts. You know, maybe last month there were three. And so, that kind of information trickles in at a very summarized level.
Yeah.
With the new standard, the, essentially, the spigots are opened, and we're going to be pouring detailed records into their databases, as with all the other agencies around the country. So, they will have a lot more detail on all the, all the things going on, which then helps the, there's a lot of this is being driven by the FBI, helps them get a better handle on what the status is of crime incidents around the country.
And those kinds of items would be like information about the kinds of, the types of people involved in the crimes, the, the time of the day that the crime is done, the--
It does not include personal information. So, it would not include, for example, the names of people, but it might include ages.
Ages, yeah.
It would more, it would, it's much more focused on the, the crime and what they call the circumstance codes.
Yeah.
So, it's more of a descriptive, it's a set of very descriptive pieces of information about the, the incident. It's analogous in a lot of ways to medical reporting that goes on now, where if you go to the doctor and you report that you're, you know, your foot's hurting, there's a chart and there's numbers that they, you know, record. It's very specific and detailed. It will, in some cases, change the way that officers have to do data entry, because what's also going to happen now is the system, a lot of the time that we're spending is building in logic to require information. So, if it's this type of a crime, there might be some additional information that's required to be captured. And that's a lot of the programming effort that goes in.
And once the enhancements are done, are we going to be able to then keep and use that database, or will we then actually be adopting a completely different program in about a year?
That's a good additional point. So, the short answer is that we will keep and use the program. It's our written, homegrown code.
Oh, I see.
So, we will retain that. We are seeking to replace the software, and that could be potentially happening in the next two or three years. But the timeline is such that it's mandatory that we adopt this new standard by January 1st of 2021.
Is there a new software out there that is being promoted nationwide?
No.
I see.
There's many vendors with competing products.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes, Bill?
So, this is probably at least, we're about a three-quarter time position, basically. Do you already have someone that will be doing this?
We have a full-time person who's dedicated to this software, and we've essentially cleared his slate and told everybody that unless something breaks, this is all he's working on. Because actually, one of the reasons that this grant was available to us is that they're, they have us working on an accelerated timeline because they want us to be a test case for the state of Illinois. So, we, in fact, are being asked not to be ready by January 1st, but actually to be ready by May 31st. So, we're working very aggressively towards that deadline.
And then with the new data fields and everything, will that also trickle down or trickle up, trickle toward the open data site so that people will have access to some more detail? A lot of that's already on there as far as age and some of the location, general location data and stuff.
We'll be reviewing the information. Some of it, for example, the circumstance codes, I could see migrating towards, over towards the open data, but otherwise, most of the information is already captured. A lot of this just has to do with how much of this information we, we provide directly to the state and the federal government versus the summarized counts that they get now.
Are the types of crime categories that are reported changing, or are those the same?
They're the same. The state has a predefined list that we use, so they have added some new fields to it, but very little--
They'll be comparable for historic purposes to--
Correct.
--compare types of crimes. Okay. All right, thanks.
Those codes are an evolving list all the time. For example, on January 1st, we had six new codes added from the cannabis laws. So, it's, that's, that's, that's an ever-changing list, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice?
Who has access to this information exactly?
The, the law enforcement community has access to all the information, but as Councilman Brown referenced, we put a lot of the information on our open data portal for the public as well. It just does not have, for example, names and addresses in the same level of detail.
So, what is the level of detail that it has now?
It'll say, for example, the, the age of the offender. It'll have information like what, like what type of location the incident occurred. It has the codes that identify what kind of crime it was, has information about the victim, the relationship of the victim to the offender. So, it's, it's descriptive information, but it doesn't tell you who the people were who were involved. It just tells you information about the crime incident itself.
Does it say what diaspora or whatever the group, the, the crime was committed by or to, or the victim?
It has a breakdown for race.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, is that--
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, it has a breakdown for race.
Okay. And does it specify what it specifies, and it specifies for that, the, who committed the crime and who the victim was? For both?
Well, about that person, but not who, who they--
Yeah, not, not names and addresses and stuff like that, but it gives that type, but it gives that type of information and location.
Right, and it describes, for example, that this occurred in a restaurant, or that, you know, this occurred on the, the street. That, that's, it's another code that we have in terms of what type of location it was.
Okay. I guess, I guess what I'm asking is like, it doesn't say, it does not necessarily say like what street or, or does it?
It kind of does. It gives the street in terms of a block. So, it would say that it occurred on the 400 block of Vine Street, but it does not tell you the specific address.
Oh, okay. But you get a general location of where it happened in Urbana?
Correct.
Okay, and, and you said that every, everyone, anyone can, can see this information?
Yes.
Okay, so what's the difference in how, what we have now? What's going to be added to the neighbors with the--
A lot of this is more about how we're sending this information to the state and the feds. Currently, we have all that, all that detailed information on our, on our own stuff--
Mm-hmm.
--and our own portal, but we don't send information that way to the state. Again, we just send them a count. We just say there were three incidents last month--
Mm-hmm.
--but not any information beyond the number three.
But the state can access that information anyway by just going to our website?
They could, but no offense to the state, they're not that active on that. They, they're waiting and asking us to send it to them in a specific way, and then all the information will come in from the, all the different agencies in the state in the same format, and then they have it all together.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments? Yes, Jared?
Make a motion.
Sure.
I know there were a lot of questions, and the clerk has informed us that a lot of these seem uncomplicated. I know we had a lot of questions from council, but I don't know if anyone will entertain this motion, but I would make a motion that we would consider this on a consent agenda for next week along with some of the other items that are coming along, if there's a second. I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to place this item on a, the consent agenda, on a consent agenda for next week's meeting. Is implicit in your motion that you want to send it to council with a recommendation for approval, or is that--
We got to vote, we got to vote on both, anyway.
Okay, we have to do on both, okay.
Oh, we can do it in one motion?
Yeah.
Well, then, yes, then my, my intent is to send it to council with approval and place on the consent agenda.
Is that the seconders' understanding, or okay with, okay?
All good.
Okay. Is there any, are there, is there any further discussion? Dennis, yes?
Yeah, I, I won't support that because I think the next two resolutions are particularly different and have a different interest for the public, and I don't think that that would be useful to put on a consent agenda.
Perhaps the last item would be, though.
Well, then, what's the point of a consent agenda?
Yeah, I guess not, that's that one. Okay.
Okay, so--
But you can vote on it.
I'll withdraw the motion and make a motion instead just to send it to council with recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll--
That's okay, that's okay with you, too. Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 In opposition? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to Resolution Number 2020-01-008R, and this will be legal department protest request for hearing intervention in property tax exemption.
This resolution, along with the, the next one, 009R, these are related to action the town board took earlier this month, where the town board made a, passed resolutions to allow the township to participate in proceedings involving property tax exemptions for Carl Foundation and OSF Hospital. And these resolutions are virtually, are identical, and they basically just give the city the authority to also intervene in these same proceedings, or to initiate.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for legal? Yes, Dennis?
And so, my understanding, and maybe you can help me understand it a little bit more, is that we need to make these resolutions so that we appear legally as partners or participants in any kind of decision-making that might be coming from these adjudications.
Yes, this is the formal, the formal method that the city council authorizes its legal representatives to, to take whatever actions they need to in these cases.
All right, and I think these are important to the community and to the city, so I will support this.
Okay. Further discussion? Certainly entertain a motion?
I'd like to move that Resolution Number 2020-01-008R being forwarded to the city council for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, would those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. And the next item is Resolution Number 2020-01-009R, which appears to be identical except for the substitution of Carl Foundation for OSF Healthcare System. Any questions or discussion? Yeah, Dennis?
Well, feeling the same way about this one, I could make a, a motion.
Please.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to move Resolution Number 2020-01-009R, which is authorizing the protest, a request for a hearing and invention, intervention in a property tax exemption proceedings with Carl Foundation for the 2019 pay, pay 2020 tax assessments forward to council with approval.
Am I hearing a second?
Second.
And Sharice seconds? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, would those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Ayes have it. And Resolution Number 2020-01-010R, Resolution Regarding the Release of Certain Closed Session Meeting Minutes and Approving the Discussion, Destruction of Certain Verbatim Records of Closed Session Meetings, and this is the purview of the city clerk.
Yes, this is your twice-a-year resolution clearing the books of whatever we can per, per last week's closed meeting, so I would appreciate approval.
I'll move approval of that resolution.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Miller and Ms. Hershey, any further discussion? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, ayes have that. And the final item on the agenda is a discussion of Vision Zero, and Alderman Brown will initiate that discussion. Actually, I'm sorry, I guess you're there not in your capacity as alderman, but in your capacity as the, the safety bike and pedestrian safety commissioner.
Bicycle and pedestrian--
Got it. Just what you said, exactly what you said.
Okay, good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. As you saw in your packets, there was quite a bit of information kind of outlining what Vision Zero is and why BPAC is interested in it, but the main ones I wanted to make sure you had a chance to look at was the nine components of strong Vision Zero commitment. It's a one-pager, and people at home, if you want to download the packet that's in there. And also the two-page blue item, Vision Zero Network Primer on Vision Zero. Between those two, it gives a pretty good overview of what Vision Zero is, and then, of course, the BPAC resolution conveyed to council the action we'd like you to eventually take. But tonight, we're just going to kind of go over what Vision Zero is. I have a presentation, and Cynthia will follow up with a presentation on basically some funding options and partnering that we can do in the community, and Audrey has some good, interesting statistics. So, I'll start, well, actually, I'll introduce Cynthia and Audrey. I'm sure you've met them before, but if not, they've both been on BPAC for quite a while. Audrey, I think you were on the very first BPAC. Have you been consistent, like, since 2006? She's one of two members of BPAC who have been on since 2006. And Cynthia is a certified planner, consultant, transportation planner, currently consulting with MTD, and also vice president of the Ride Illinois, which is the main, the bicycle advocacy operation for the state of Illinois, and they're-- And they're probably, Ride Illinois is responsible for millions of dollars of bicycle infrastructure that has come to Illinois. And Audrey's also a civil engineer, although she works more with water flow than traffic flow, I think. But it's it's great to have both of them on BPAC. So just beginning with what Vision Zero is, it's, you can see there that a lot of cities have already implemented some some sort of Vision Zero plan. Basically, it's a strategy to eliminate traffic fatalities and severe injuries among all road users and to ensure safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. It differs a little bit from the traditional approach. Vision Zero likes to think it's more of a systems approach. It considers more, besides just infrastructure, it also takes the stance that traffic, all traffic deaths are preventable, they are inevitable, and it allows for some human error. So there's backup systems, basically. If someone fails, then hopefully it won't be enough to cause a fatal accident. It's also, so it also believes that saving lives doesn't have to be expensive. There are inexpensive options, especially with messaging and culture change. So why Zero? I have a couple of short Youtubes that I'll play. The first one is kind of a person on the street interview from Denver. Hopefully, the audio will work.
I would only be guessing, maybe fifteen hundred?
Couple hundred?
I don't know, say a thousand.
Probably over a few dozen, I'd have to say.
In Urbana, that's about fifty percent.
drunk driving.
alcohol-related.
texting and driving.
road rage.
I would say sadly not.
No.
Probably not.
I'm hoping for that.
Hundreds, hundred and fifty?
I'd think less than a hundred.
How could you quantify such a thing?
No, I mean, everybody needs to die.
There's no reason for it.
Zero. Zero? Ah, zero, absolutely.
Zero.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, they should shoot for that.
Absolutely. Ideally, yes.
Yes, yes, definitely. Obviously, yeah, zero would be the best goal.
So that was, that was Denver. This is from, this next one is from Victoria. Yeah, Victoria. And it's shorter, it's just one person. I think he was kind of set up for this.
Two hundred and forty-nine people died on our roads. What do you think would be a more acceptable number?
Um, acceptable? Seventy, maybe, probably seventy?
Can you say seventy? Actually, this is what seventy people looks like.
It's my family.
So now, what do you think would be a more acceptable number?
Zero. Zero.
So obviously, as the numbers get smaller and you start thinking about family and community, there's really nothing, no other way to think of it than the goal has to be zero. So for recent statistics, in Urbana, last year, January through October, this is sort of show why BPAC has a particular interest in this. Only six percent of the crashes involved pedestrians or cyclists, but they accounted for nearly thirty percent of the injuries. These are just, these aren't serious injuries. These are anything that's counted as injury in our Urbana Police Department, open dated. Does not, it also doesn't include any crashes that were handled by UIPD. So all these that we have data on came off our website from, you know, from Urbana Police Department. So of those, almost every, every accident with a pedestrian or cyclist had an injury. I think there was one, one excellent, one reported accident crash with a pedestrian and one with a cyclist that didn't have injuries. All the others that were reported did. And of the total crashes, twenty-one percent had injuries. So it's disproportionately impacting the vulnerable road users. So can we eliminate traffic fatalities and severe injuries? So this is what we mean when we talk about severe injuries. There's a statistic that's classified as type A injury. It's defined as severe lacerations, broken, distorted extremities, crush injuries, skull, chest, or abdominal injury, significant burns, unconsciousness when taken from the crash scene, or paralysis. These are severe injuries that result from high impact.
Life-altering.
Yeah, life-altering injuries that can result in disability. And you aren't walking away from these, you're probably going straight to the hospital if you're if you're conscious. The type A injuries in Champaign-Urbana, the blue line is champagne, it's been decreasing since about 2004 gradually. Urbana's been more flat. So typically, we have about thirty-five to forty-five severe injuries every year. And Audrey will go into more, more of the local death statistics. This is to show some national trends, and it might help explain why Urbana's hasn't been decreasing the same rate that Champagne's has. If you look, this is the trends, the graph shows a trend since 2005. So everything is normalized to begin at 2005. And then the the lines go up or down depending on the percentage increase in that type of accident. The overall numbers, pedestrians, there's six thousand. Cyclists, they call them pedo cyclists in the statistics, is eight fifty-seven. Motorcyclists, vehicle occupants, and others. So total thirty-six thousand for the for the country in in 2018. Over the years, the blue line shows that until about 2009, pedestrian crashes were going, or deaths were going down. And then they've been going up pretty steadily since then. Pretty similar for bicycle. So if you think of Urbana's main transportation users, a lot of our users are pedestrians and bicyclists. So we've probably struggled against, struggled to reduce our fatality or our serious injury rate, which is probably related to fatality rate, partially because of this this trend that we see nationally. There's various theories on why that is. One of them is potentially that vehicle occupants are being protected pretty well by the new vehicles, partially because they're heavier and and bigger, and then they do more damage to the vulnerable users. There are other theories, so that's something that still needs to be explained. So I guess, just going back a couple of slides, can can we reduce this to zero? It seems like thirty-five to forty-five is not a huge number that you should think is is impossible. So even our severe injuries, certainly we should be able to reduce our fatalities to zero, but even our severe injuries, thirty-five is not an insurmountable number. And as an example, also Norway with a population of six hundred some thousand adopted Vision Zero early in the late nineties. They were one of the first ones to adopt it. But before that, going back to nineteen seventy-five, I guess they only had statistics every five years, and but they started out with forty-one deaths per year. And it's gradually come down. And then in the nineties, when they adopted Vision Zero, it was still almost twenty per year. And finally, last year, they had one fatality, which was a car that ran into a fence, and they've had zero pedestrian and cyclist fatalities all year, the city of over six hundred dozen people. So Vision Zero, you can think of as kind of an umbrella for a lot of different activities going on regarding traffic safety. So it's a, it's a method that involves planning and goal setting. So there's targets and goals. It's pretty data-intensive or can be data-intensive if you want it and if you have the data. In in our case, it'll probably involve a lot of public messaging because we already do quite a bit of planning as far as infrastructure goes and capital improvement allocation. It will involve that too, but one of the main focuses, I think, in our area will be public messaging and just trying to change the 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 culture of road use. So some of the strategies include building and sustaining leadership, collaboration with a diverse group of people. We'll be talking about that a little bit more about what kind of people we might want on a task force. Collecting data, prioritizing, taking into consideration equity, community engagement to make sure that everybody is represented, managing speed, and then setting a timeline to achieve zero traffic deaths and serious injuries. And that brings urgency and accountability. Implementation can be through comprehensive planning, the four E's, engineering, education, enforcement, and emergency services. Traffic safety culture, that'll be a big one, short and long-term goal setting, and advancing the most effective solutions. One of the ways to find out what's most effective is using some of the resources available. There, one of the big ones is Vision Zero Network. Cynthia will be talking about a couple others, but I want to make sure that you noted this one, it's easy to look up online. But they have case, case studies and guidelines for developing the action plan. So that would be a real good resource for us. And then the Federal Highway Safety Administration also has some good resources. I didn't go into the background and history of Vision Zero. I had about five slides on that, but we have some other presentations. I know that even though it's been a short meeting, you don't want to be here all night, but if you're interested, we can, we can talk about that a little bit. And the first step that we're going to ask you to take tonight is a political commitment to ask, ask BPAC or ask me or ask staff to bring forward a council resolution adopting a goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries by 2030. We have some example resolutions in the packet from other cities. And then the first step in achieving that goal would be to establish a Vision Zero task force that would explore funding options for developing a strategic plan, including listing available funding sources and options. So not necessarily developing the strategic plan themselves, although that is an option, the task force might be able to do that, given the amount of resources we have online. But if they can't develop it themselves, then they need to come up with some suggestions for funding sources. So that's what I had. I think Cynthia was going to go next.
Is the presentation loaded or do I need to load it?
That's one I copied.
Here it is. Is that mine?
Did you change it?
Nope.
Okay.
That's it.
That's the same.
Yeah. Oop, clicked on the wrong thing. I guess I can't see well enough over there. Got trifocals. Okay. Well, thank you all for hearing us tonight. And so we were looking at implementation. We've talked to other communities. Columbia, Missouri developed an action plan. I'm going to talk about how other communities have developed their action plans for implementation and give you some information on that. So I happen to know one of the city council members. He works for America Walks. He's one of the national staff people. But before that, he helped create an organization there called PEDNET. And and then he ran for city council. And so I I talked with him. I've worked in that community as a consultant. And also, he brought a group of people up. Part of their city council came up to look at our transit here. I think we frightened them with the level of our transit service in the community. And they were a little, they don't have very good transit in Columbia. But anyway, he, I contacted him about our efforts and they approved a Vision Zero policy in December of 2016. And then they approved an action plan in 2017. And there's a URL there if you want to go take a look at it. They did it through a city-appointed task force, and now they're using grant funding for initial implementation, and I'll talk about that a little bit more too. The initial work was done with the task force, and then that plan was adopted. And then the grant funding was through their PEDNET organization, which is a 501(c)(3). And it came through the Missouri Foundation for Health. So that, the health community is a very big partner in this because this is a public health issue. And a number of people being killed on our roads. And the fact that obesity is an epidemic in this country, it's, our obesity rates are very high among adults and children in Champaign County. And as part of our I Plan, our Community Health Plan, we have been there to have more active lifestyles. Well, people can't be active if they don't feel safe walking and biking and using transit. So the health community is very much a partner in this, and we can talk with them about potential funding options. I just wanted to show you Columbia's Vision Zero webpage. They have a lot of information there. They said that it didn't cost anything. They used the data they already had to develop their action plan and develop their objectives and move forward. Also, there is many available through the National Safety Council. It's called a Safe Systems Innovations Grant. And to qualify, you need to explain how your program will reduce roadway fatalities, set a timeframe for the reduction, how it will be evaluated, how you tend to reach your target in the audiences and the funds that you're looking for. So in 2019, there were seven grant members, and I thought I would just list those for you here so you can see the diversity of who has been getting that funding to tell you that I think we could be competitive with a good grant application. And then I wanted to focus on just a few of those. This was the city of North Miami Beach, which is not a really big city. They had an objective to deploy strategies to reduce roadway fatalities. By the way, Florida, far and away, has the highest number of pedestrian and bicycle fatalities in the country. They have a big problem there. My mother-in-law lives there, and when I go to see her, I find it frightening when I drive, walk, or do any other form of transportation there. They got $200,000 and developed a plan. The city of Chicago got one in twenty-seven, twenty seventeen. I was the Vision Zero Garfield. And so they developed, you can see quite a number of goals that they wanted to have community members' membership and coordinated dialogue. So they really, I think they got the grant because they really wanted to do a lot of community outreach and public engagement and ensure that the public was very much united in moving forward. And so the toolkit, I think, provides us the vision, the Road to Zero Communications Toolkit, provides us with almost everything that we need. And we've got some very talented people in the community who have already begun working with us to look at how we could message information in this community. And by the way, we have already proven we can do this here. When I moved here, we had a high pedestrian fatality rate on this campus. I was horrified when I moved here. I couldn't believe how bad it was. And through the efforts of the cities, the university, MTD, and the Regional Planning Commission, over the years, they have worked very hard. They've done work on engineering. MCOR's grant is one of the actions that was taken that I helped with with MTD. They worked on law enforcement and education. And we have had zero fatalities among bicyclists and pedestrians on campus for several years now. So we have proven that we can do this. It's just a matter of undertaking the strategies, working consistently together to accomplish what we said. what we set out to do. And Urbana can definitely do this. All right. I will turn it over to...
I'm going to take a few minutes to talk about why Urbana, why we can't wait for the region, for Champaign County, for RPC, for Champaign, to be ready to make a commitment to Vision Zero in our area, in our Twin Cities. First of all, just taking a step back again, the seriousness of the problem is very hard to grasp. The media simply does not report on fatalities that seem scattered and random. As you know, when you put together a jet, you have a manifest. When you have pedestrian or car fatalities throughout the entire country, you've got thousands upon thousands of reports that need to come together. They're quick to jump on a pileup on the interstate, you know, 10 cars, 10 people. But the number, every two weeks, basically pedestrians can fill, that killed pedestrians can fill a single 737 MAX eight, which is very hard to bring to mind that that's the scope of the problem we're dealing with. Well, should, when we think that there were 778 million domestic flights originating in the U.S., that's tickets, ticketed people getting on a plane, that's more than two per person. Every man, woman, and child in the country could get on a plane. There was one airline death in 2018, the same year that there were 6,283 pedestrian deaths alone, 36,000 something motor deaths. So the question is, should we really accept that walking across our neighborhood is riskier than flying across the country? Well, it's finally time that communities and countries even around the world are saying, no, no, that is not acceptable. Aviation has long had a Vision Zero aspiration and implementation, and so can the cities. So I'm going to look at 2018's rate on pedestrian deaths from the traffic safety facts put out by the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration. Vision Zero cities that I just mentioned that have decided they won't accept those, that kind of fatality rate are marked with red asterisks. Now, it doesn't say what the trend is. It doesn't say what year they adopted it here. We know the first one, New York City, is taking it pretty seriously. Their pedestrian fatality rate is 1.1 per 100,000. Los Angeles, California, is having a lot more trouble implementing theirs. They've even had to take some steps back in their car-oriented culture. They've had to remove road diets and stuff. They're still pretty up there. Chicago, working it. Philadelphia, well, this won't make you real happy to tell you that this is the rate Urbana is at for pedestrian fatalities per 100,000. That's because we only need one pedestrian to die to have a rate of 2.38 per 100,000. We're a community of just 42,000, and that's what it multiplies up to. So San Antonio's apparently taking it to heart. San Diego, I know they've appreciated Vision Zero as an opportunity to also meet their sustainability goals. And they don't mind telling people when they demand, you know, when they take out parking, go ahead and sue us. We're committed to Vision Zero. We are committed to sustainability. And they have a framework to tell people that. Also, they happen to be a super attractive place to live, which probably helps. We have Austin, Texas, again, around our rate. The percentage of total traffic fatalities is also marked there. Ours, as Bill mentioned, around 50%. We're dealing with very small numbers, so it's harder. Later, I'm going to show you over 10 years what it looks like. Charlotte recently became Vision Zero, but I have seen some of their materials, and it looks to me like they are surely going to do better. Seattle is doing very well. They're taking it very seriously. Boston, Massachusetts, that's significant to me because when my son moved there, I was totally horrified. He's a head-in-the-clouds kind of guy, and people drive there like they're out to kill you, literally. Imagine my shock that I see, oh, they have a 1.6 pedestrian death rate. They, 11 died in 2018. And that's actually, to match our rate, they could have 16 die because they're 16 times our population, and we're having one die. Also, their overall fatality rate's fairly low. So maybe it's not so bad. Maybe being cussed at is better than not being noticed. I don't know. Okay. So putting this in the overall context, Bill went over this where he had normalized it for you. The Governor's Highway Safety Association has been putting out a lot of publicity about this, basically beating the drum. They put this out a little bit early last year when they projected 6,227, and it ended up being 6,382. So we beat the projection. Putting this in context of the causes of death, depending on your age is what you will eventually die of, presumably. But particularly shocking, the blue things are unintentional injuries. So they have actually lumped auto accidents with other types of injuries, including guns. And I'm going to show you the breakdown in a moment. But those blue things are showing you how important motor vehicles are by far the most in the younger age groups, up to 44, after which falls and other things may start becoming more important. And it ends up being important in the total overall. So this is years of life lost. Not even in the height of our tobacco crisis were we really losing so many young people. It's the number-one killer of children and teens, which is years of life lost. And this study is from the New England Journal of Medicine. It came out last year. They put children as 0 to 19, meaning that a lot of the population we have on campus would be fitting into that basic children and teens group. In one of five traffic deaths, that child is on foot. That child is a pedestrian. We know that legions of parents, even in this community, are not allowing their children to walk freely because they're terrified of the traffic. As Cynthia alluded to, obesity, diabetes, and mental health issues are rising to unimaginable levels throughout the country. And we know it's a goal that all children need to have, the access to safe and autonomous activity, which walking and bicycling can really bring you. You can't count on a park. You can't count on a gym. But almost everyone, if they were safe, would be able to walk outside at some point. And here's that breakdown of those unintentional injuries. The leading cause of death is unintentional injury. 61% of death in children, 0 to 19, are caused by these injuries. And motor vehicle crashes take 5 per 100,000 children, unbelievably. Firearm injuries are something like, on the order of 4 per 100,000. Those are breaking down into the different groups. So it's urban, suburban, rural. You can see it's pretty amazing how evenly that's spread for firearm injuries. The motor vehicle is a much higher rate, although fewer people since it's rural areas. And then cancer comes in at 9% of child deaths. And then the other items. So what does that mean for Urbana? What can we do here? Well, first of all, we need to realize more than one-third of pedestrian fatalities do occur on local streets, and another quarter are occurring on state highways. Well, that's Urbana to a T. We've got Lincoln Avenue. We've got state highways. We've got Cunningham. We've got University Avenue. Nevertheless, we can do things. We're responsible for working with the state to make these safer places for pedestrians. I'm going to go over some statistics, and I will just mention where the data comes from. It's pretty much RPC, maybe in a couple places supplemented with IDOT for the newer years. But actually, RPC recently updated the statistics to 2017 for their Long Range Transportation Plan Report Card. And you can see, after 1999, they started including these outlying towns in the urbanized area. But they've only added two fatalities so far in 2007 and 2008 to the totals. The rest is Champaign-Urbana. Urbana's has been highlighted for you here. And you can see in the 90s, there were quite a number of zeros in our fatalities for the year. And these kind of fade away. After 2003, there's no more. We had a very severe year in 2009. But still, overall, things became surprisingly uniform, an acceptance of total fatalities at a rate that really is not acceptable for our population. So traffic deaths in Urbana, looking now at just the last 10 years, you can see that list of twos. I believe 2018 was better, maybe 2019. Anyway, the numbers will change a little bit, but they've been amazingly consistent. And from RPC, these were the injured, just to give you an idea, that's all injuries, not the serious, not just the serious injuries that Bill was mentioning, coming in around 30 to 45 a year. So our average rate in the earlier 10 years was 1.2. That was 12 for 10 years. Now, we've had 21 for the last 10 years. Yeah, the average rate is 2.1. We've had 21 deaths in the last 10 years, and 10 were pedestrians, one a cyclist. In the 12-year traffic deaths in the previous 10 years, three were pedestrians. And I've kept that separate just so that the statistics are comparable with those I showed you earlier. But there were two cyclists also, so a large number of vulnerable road users. Okay. And now we're going to look at, well, is this, how does this compare? You saw that large-city comparison, but those were cities over half a million. What about something a little closer to us, like Champaign? Okay. So in the first 10 years, in the blue bars or purple bars, it looks like on the screen, there were 34 fatalities in Champaign and 12 in Urbana. In the last 10 years, there were 32 in Champaign and 21 in Urbana. The bars have been normalized to the per 100,000 rate. As I mentioned, Champaign has got, it's about double our size. It's got about 87,000 people at present. This has been normalized with what the population was at the end of those time periods, so 2007 and 2017. In any case, Urbana was previously much better than Champaign in this blue period. Okay? In the 1998 to 2007 period, the blue period, Urbana was clearly better than Champaign in terms of fatalities. In the purple period, which is the most recent period, 2008 to 2017, Urbana's had quite a lot more in the normalized sense and, you know, climbing up there. Let's look at pedestrians. Okay? For pedestrians, again, the blue bar period, Urbana was better than Champaign. We had three pedestrians. We did have the two cyclists, but I'm focusing just on pedestrians here. We, in the red bar current period, Champaign has actually dropped to six fatalities, pedestrian fatalities. Urbana increased to 10 in the last 10 years. So you can see in that normalized bar, it's quite an increase.
Audrey, are those concentrated in any particular location, like Lincoln Avenue or University Avenue?
The, as you know, the RPC puts out the reports that show the mapped areas and the statistics. But unfortunately, they're put out on five-year spans. And so they only show five years at a time. And no one, to my knowledge, has put it together so that we could say, you know, whether there's a real trend. It's kind of hard across just five fatalities to say if it's concentrated. It may very well be, but this is something we would need to look at in the task force.
We did have several on University, however, which is why we were so adamant. BPAC really, really was very adamant when the safety study was being done that they needed to take a look at what was happening there. And we pushed really hard to get the speed limit lowered, which they did, in fact, do.
And that was a big driver for the renovation on University Avenue that's about to get started.
Right. It was a result of that safety study.
Right. The state has to share responsibility for University Avenue, for sure. And we do believe that they are concentrated on University and Lincoln. I just haven't seen it put together. But it, you know, we know that the last five years, they definitely were. I just don't know about the last 10, the last 20. I haven't seen it, but I believe that they are pretty concentrated. The ones on University are just really very disturbing, you know, just south of Crystal Lake Park.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
Looking at these, also, I'm thinking in terms of, because of so much of U of I's in Urbana, how much of these are, is the campus environment at all involved in any of this?
Well, what they call the university district has about one-third or been at two-thirds Champaign. I don't know why that is.
Well, and I do know, too, that there are a lot of students that live in different areas, not necessarily off of Green Street, you know, or Illinois. There's university housing off of Lincoln, one south and one north. I think that's what they're called for students. There's other apartment buildings and such around the city of Urbana period. You know, Orchard Downs, you think about those, that area. Also, those are, that's student, student living, student housing. So that's why I wanted to know if there was going to be any kind of partnership or something like this with the Vision Zero, too, regarding university, the University of Illinois, because so many students live within the city.
Oh, yeah. The university would be very, very interested in this. However, I will say that the fatalities that have occurred have, by and large, not been students. The fatalities on University were elderly people. And as is often the case, the elderly and minorities are significantly overrepresented and people who are killed, who are pedestrians and bicyclists, because, and lower-income people. And so, to the best of my knowledge, we have not had any students hit and seriously injured crossing North Lincoln. We have had on South Lincoln. There have been some students hit. We had one student that was hit and killed on the sidewalk on Lincoln. That was an accident that involved, you know, an issue with someone not being, I guess, intoxicated driving was the final, one of the final charges, driving while impaired. Yeah. But that's part of what we would do with additional data analysis, is dive in deeper and take a closer look at some, because we got enough, we have a low enough number that we can actually go back and look at the crash reports and gather additional data and look at more of the demographics of who was hit. But by and large, it has not been students. And so that's information that we want to take more of a look at.
There was one student killed on University Avenue by the hospitals crossing the street.
That was a while ago.
After unofficial. It was, I do have a list of links to news gazette articles from about the last 10 or 15 years that pretty much correlate with all these numbers. So I think just about every fatality that was pedestrian or bicyclist, I have a link to the news gazette article for, I can send that around if you'd like.
There was one pedestrian hit crossing University, and she actually was in the math department, which my husband is in. So that one I'm very aware of. But that was probably about 10 years ago or close to it.
Yeah. And I would also mention, there's a bit of an undercount because these, for example, the person who was hit on a ladder, that was actually coded as crashing into a fixed object, not as a pedestrian, which at first, I'm horrified, but, you know, that does make some sense. It's, there's also an undercount nationally of pedestrian deaths because you have to be killed on a public road, not on a private parking lot. And you can't be in a stroller, and you can't be in a wheelchair. Those are not pedestrians. So there is actually a national undercount as well.
One of the ones on University was in a wheelchair, and they were counted as a pedestrian.
Okay. Yeah. Nationally, they're not supposed to be. That's called personal conveyance. Okay. So let's see. And then I brought, you know, I brought these pictures reminding us back to the video Bill showed. You know, these people headed off to work in the morning, they headed off to school, they headed off to shop, no idea they would not be coming home that night. That's just how sudden these are, these come out of nowhere to somebody and to people that you or I could know or be. And that's, I think, part of the difficulty is realizing that could be us, you know? We sort of shy away. I'm not, I'm not on a cell phone. I'm not, you know, this or that. But that, these people didn't expect that either. Okay. Pedestrian crashes, just, there was, I was a little short on some kinds of data. They did have pedestrian crashes through 2016. And interesting- And interestingly enough, there's not a real significant, I wouldn't call that significant at all, decline in the pedestrian crashes in Champaign, even though there was somewhat of a decline in the fatalities, and a small decline in Urbana over those 10-year periods that had a dramatic increase in fatalities from three to 10. So, what is the reason for this? This is something, again, that I could only speculate without more analysis. But it does suggest that maybe distraction isn't really behind this. The number of crashes isn't increasing, as far as we can tell right now. Okay, so, just to mention quickly, some of the things we might do to change things is considering how we got where we are. Marketing and safety culture. Marketing by the motor industry is what created the social perception that walking is not a right, it's a risky activity for poor, naive people who don't have choices. The term jaywalking was entirely derogatory when that started being applied to pedestrians. And yet, that became part of the legal code, thanks to a concerted effort backed by the auto industry. The latest iteration being that, you know, anybody who's killed is probably a student or on a cell phone. It wouldn't be me, in other words. And that's really just the latest iteration of this dehumanizing of those who are on foot. And maybe what we need to see is people made into the superhero of the street because they're on foot. Meanwhile, we see car marketing every time we turn on the TV, implying that if you have this SUV or this pickup truck, you can drive faster, freer than anybody else, and you're totally safe. Well, we just saw a couple people killed in Urbana in an SUV rollover, which of course is ruining our 2020 statistics already, having two this early. That is another question that I'd be interested in, is how many of the fatalities and the drivers behind them, in the case of pedestrians, drivers are rarely analyzed, are actually residents of Urbana or perhaps commuters from elsewhere. Again, the car industry belittled pedestrians, would ridicule, in which they had a person acting archaic, you know, dressed poorly, acting as a clown, getting hit because he didn't know better than to be in the street. I don't know if we would want to translate this to a cell phone ridicule process, but maybe, you know, if it works, we would. But it's maybe more of a, let's make the pedestrian a superhero and take their responsibility as a superhero very proudly. Finally, the SUVs and cars, SUV accidents have been increasing. They didn't cover, these are graphics from that Governor's Highway Safety Association. They did not cover light trucks here, and they apparently didn't include it in there. But I believe light trucks are also a very big increasing portion of the accidents. In fact, on our recent ones on Vine Street, in April, since April 1, was a pickup truck, as you know, at Main, and there was a terrible accident that, again, was not picked up by the media because there was no drunken angle to cover, and someone didn't die, even though they had life-changing injuries. And that was right here on Illinois, and that was a van, yes, a small passenger van. So, larger vehicles do not give pedestrians the chance to live. They get knocked down and completely destroyed, you know, immediately. We do have a number of local resources for Vision Zero. We're not building this from nothing, for sure, from zero, so to speak. We've got the data, we've got the analyses put out by the RPC. It has its shortcomings that we would need to stitch together, take the time to put that together. I think that we have a lot of expertise and a lot of passion for this, and we would find a way to do it once we put it in a framework of not accepting fatalities and serious injuries, that we're going to do something about it. We're not going to look at this piecemeal, five years at a time, one accident at a time. We are, like Diane said, we are going to look at what's the pattern? What's going on here? Who are the people involved? We have venues in which to get the message out, channels that are free or close to it. We may be able to run PSAs. I'm not sure about billboards, if that's kind of a distraction in itself or not, but that's what comes to mind in terms of reaching out to motorists. We also have Safe Routes to School organizations like that, like CCB. And this is just an example of the patterns that are available. Again, the shortcoming being it's only five years at a time, but patterns, looking at what kind of, who were involved in fatal crashes? Were they impaired? What was the weather? What was the time of day? Many, many, many crashes are after work, which suggests to us a targeted message right there. People are so in a hurry to get home, they don't check if they're going to get home at all. So, we've got, you know, a target right there. A lot of the fatalities are at that time as well. And then, for pedestrians, another shortcoming is we're not focusing on what's the driver, you know? Who is the driver? It's not just who's the pedestrian. It does say it was 50/50, but you can see in a certain age range, there's more females. And that's shown right here. Weather conditions, time of day, what was the type of car is something that's not current. It is reported, it can be found, and actually, this data can be requested in a compiled form from the state. We just have to do it, we would want RPC to sit at the table, and that is because RPC, COATs, I should say, has set up targets for getting towards zero, such that if we got to zero in Urbana, we would meet their targets for the whole region in the next five years, because their target is one less fatality. So, if we get there, they're done. So, RPC should have a place at the table and should definitely be interested in helping make sure those targets happen. We don't want to see these kinds of stories anymore. Bill mentioned he has found those stories. What we want to be doing is celebrating Urbana's reality as a Vision Zero city.
So, is there public input?
There is, I have two public input slips.
Did you want to do that now, or did you want to, if you had any other question?
Yeah, let's do it now, and Annie Adams, I believe, didn't necessarily, did you want to address the council or just indicate your support?
I'll just address. I thought I'd hit address. I don't have much to say, to be honest with you. Hi, I'm Annie Adams. Thank you so much for being here. I'm on the Urbana Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. I think, for me, I've been very aware of Vision Zero, very aware of that we, as a city, need to move towards it. It's, I think what really brought it home for me was Shelley E. Taylor, a 49-year-old, crossing the street at Main Street and Vine, was killed April 12, 2019. That really broke my heart. I was almost killed at that intersection, and lots of other people came forward at our BPAC meeting saying they had had similar problems. And what we're really looking at are near misses. So, that's what they do in the airline industry, that's how they get down to Vision Zero, is they look at near misses and they try to figure out what the near misses are. Around the corner from me, where I live, Cottage Grove, three cars were wiped out one evening. The people that live in the house have three or four little kids. Two of the folks that live in that house are teachers, and they will not let their children walk to school. I grew up walking and biking everywhere. I had nine brothers and sisters. We walked and biked everywhere. And I really fear that we are creating a culture where people cannot walk and bike, whether you're eight or 80. We're saying, no, we cannot put crosswalks on Washington Avenue at Anderson, because that would slow down traffic. And people don't cross there anyway, people aren't there. I see one older gentleman, when I bike home from work, he has two little dogs. And he, I fear for him every day, because he is a very slow walker, and he crosses the street very slowly. And on the street, I live on Wabash, we put up these blue and white signs that say, you know, "Drive like your kids live here, drive like your pets live here." And still, we have one neighbor who drives 60 miles an hour down that street. We wrote him a note, we gave him a postcard. But people use our street, we do not have sidewalks on Wabash. People use our street at night, they walk their dogs, little children play on that street. So, it really is just raising awareness that we all use these streets. And it's really developing a system where we can all use the streets safely. I think slowing ourselves down and just being more aware is really worth all of that. And I think people really just have absolutely no idea of the number of people killed every year. 32,000 people are killed inside their cars every year. And between '08 and 2017, 49,340 pedestrians were killed by car crashes in the United States. So, I just think people really have no idea, they feel like it's a onesie-twosie thing, but it really is a system, and we can stop it. We really can, so that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeff Yoki, I believe, would like to address council in support.
Hello, Jeff Yaki, at 304 West Washington, Urbana resident and member of Champaign County Bikes. And I sent a letter to you late this afternoon, on behalf of the Board of Champaign County Bikes, just to let you know that we, as bike advocates, have been learning and thinking about Vision Zero since about 2014. We introduced it into the Illinois Bike Summit discussion in 2015. Made it an item on our strategic plan in early 2016, and I'm delighted that the council is considering this movement. We're excited that Urbana particularly is a bicycle-friendly gold community. That puts us way on the leading edge of bicycle friendliness in the state of Illinois. And so, it would be great for us to adopt this and to move in this direction. So, in 2018, we made Vision Zero the theme of Bike Month. And so, we had these bright yellow t-shirts that said "Vision Zero," and we gave handouts, talking about the impact of reducing speed and designing roadway so that there could be zero, we could get to zero in terms of deaths and fatalities. So, we've been trying to create a community discussion. And we just sort of pledged to you, on behalf of our organization, that if you were to go ahead with this recommendation and become a Vision Zero city, that we'll do all we can in terms of having discussions on the streets, in the parks, everywhere we go, where we're engaging cyclists and pedestrians, to communicate what this is, why it's a good thing to support your steps, and whatever the task force decides to implement to make that happen. So, we'll lean into this and be your partners in that. Anyway, thanks for considering this presentation.
Thank you. Council have questions, comments for anybody who has presented on this to us or commented on it? Yeah, Jared?
I mean, I'd certainly be in support of adopting this. I've talked with Cynthia at length about some of the things we could do. And she sent me a lot of materials. I think it's a realistic thing for us to do, and it won't exhaust, you know, great amounts of city resources. There's tons of grants out there, lots of things we can take advantage of that aren't going to take us. And we have very willing community members who are willing to step up and help make it happen, so. After the presentation, that's definitely how I feel.
Other comments? I'll just make a comment that, you know, I serve on the Traffic Commission, and I would certainly be sympathetic to there being a standing item each month in the Traffic Commission, which would be aimed perhaps at having the Traffic Commission consider each month some low-hanging fruit, where we could move in this direction, whether it be road markings or lighting, or, I mean, those are the, obviously, cheaper things will get done first, but, or, how do we make this a priority in our infrastructure development? So, we don't systematically consider, have safety items on the agenda at the Traffic Commission meetings, and in my opinion, we ought to. And Diane?
Couple of things that actually are going to complement this effort very well is we're about to embark on a rewrite of our comprehensive plan, which is about 10 years overdue, and it's going to be a comprehensive, comprehensive plan. I want to incorporate sustainability and resilience to climate change and transportation issues and safety issues. And it's going to be more than just land use and zoning. It's going to be a very broad approach to a lot of things that affect quality of life in our city. And I remember when the complete streets policy was passed back in 2010 or 11, you know, then that was incorporated into the comp plan at the time. And so, those goals of the, you know, complete streets became the goals of the comp plan, and I could see this as the same sort of thing. The other thing is, I also want to, I've been asking, I was starting to talk with staff about focusing CDBG money in, trying to concentrate it more in neighborhoods or blocks so that we really make a difference in a particular neighborhood in our city. So, if there are areas that need streetlights or areas that need sidewalks, or instead of scattering the dollars throughout the city like we've done in the past, I really want to use those funds where people can see a difference from one year to the next, even if it's just block by block. So, that would also be part of this effort as well. And it's mostly education, as you point out, but there's still a lot of land use and planning and infrastructure that we also need to be looking at. But we're embarked, I see the comp plan as a great framework for public engagement in the next couple of years. It's going to be extensive public engagement and education. And the strategies that come out of something for Vision Zero would also be incorporated into the comp plan eventually. So, it's just a matter of identifying funding sources and who's going to do this, because staff is stretched to the limit, as you know, so, but I think it's doable, so. I'm looking at the people.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'm curious a little bit to know what your focal point will be for community engagement. I'm wondering if you're going to be trying to work particularly strongly with junior high and high school people, people who are becoming drivers for the first time? Or are you going to be addressing, you know, the adult population, or will it be wide-ranging?
Well, certainly, with the Safe Routes to School funding, we do a lot of data collection already. We send out a parent survey twice a year as part of our grant and ask them about their kids walking and biking to school. We hear from the schools about issues that they have, we hear from the kids about issues that they have. And there are programs available. Now, one of the things that we can easily use and implement is the Illinois Bike Safety Quiz. It's online, it's free, there are, you can take it for a child, you can take it for motorists, you can take it as a cyclist. And they have, in fact, then recently added one for truck drivers. And also, I was talking with the directors last week, and he said they now have a Spanish version as well. They'll be posting online. With regards to outreach, one of the other things that I think that we could take a look at is an update of the Champaign County Health Plan, I-Plan. The one that we have now goes through 2020. That process will be going forward. There were a number of objectives and strategies included in that one, addressing roadway safety, because obesity was one of the three priorities for Champaign County in improving health in the community. And so, that's another opportunity for public conversation about safety in the community. But I think if you approve the resolution for us tonight and you appoint a task force, the first thing the task force needs to take a look at is how they want to proceed. Do they want to take a look at moving forward with an action plan? How do they want to get public input, et cetera? We have a lot of data. We would like to have additional analysis of that data. So, I think that group would need to take some direction from you and then take a look at how they want to proceed. And, you know, we can adopt something fairly And, you know, we can adopt something fairly simple as an action plan, that's not big to get us going, and look at applying for grant funding, do more in-depth outreach and analysis down the road. It sort of depends on how we want to approach it. But I have a grant right now for Safe Rites to School. I have bought Time on Radio. We're going to be doing a billboard, and we've also been doing bus boards as part of that grant. And so there's no reason why, if we focused on Vision Zero as part of the program for Safe Rites to School, focusing on parents and kids, because the biggest violators in school zones of the rules are usually parents. So there's a lot of work to be done in school zones, getting people to comply with that and watch out for kids. And that has been completely supported in terms of staff support by MTD. I have to say, we would not have a program, we have one of the only programs in the state that's been running for over 14 years, and that is because MTD has paid for my time and an intern's time. We have gotten the grants, but the state of Illinois does not allow any of the funding to be used for staff support. We're the only state in the country that has that rule, by the way, which I find very frustrating, but we can use the funding then for other things. And if we wanted to use some of that funding to take a look at how to reduce crashes around schools, we could see about doing that for Champagne, Urbana, as well.
And I would just mention that there's about 35 communities already in the country that have started Vision Zero programs, and they have their materials all on the web. I found Charlotte, North Carolina somehow seemed, I know it doesn't seem exactly like us, but there were a lot of similarities, in my mind, to the culture and the way of thinking about it, and the step-by-step approach they took to getting the message out to the community struck me as an excellent model for us to follow, and it's already built. They had a timeline, they had these outreach events, and how they got the message of Vision Zero, got buy-in from the community, was pretty neat. And we don't have to invent this from, you know, from zero again.
I have a process question for the clerk. This item is noticed as a discussion, which, and so I don't know if it's legal for us to actually take any action. What can we do?
You wouldn't be taking action, anyway, as a committee, but you can give direction to staff, to go off and do X, Y, and Z.
Okay. So perhaps we could discuss, if we're ready to do that, whether we wish to direct staff to act on the recommendations from BPEC? Is that? That would be appropriate?
I'd say I'd be interested in seeing a real resolution come out of this, for sure, as proposed by Bill. Maybe not the exact same one, but, you know, if that's sufficient, sure, but otherwise.
I think that's kind of what we're, oh, I'm sorry, do you want to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's kind of what we were looking for, is some direction, maybe for staff to work with BPEC to bring forward a resolution implementing the recommendations of BPEC. We'd also like to hear a little bit of discussion about how you think the task force should work, and maybe we could get this from staff, too, whether it should meet with Traffic Commission or BPEC, and how often, and who should, what organizations should we include when we recruit people for the task force? We have ideas about that, but if you have any particular input that you'd like to make sure that we got into that, that would help, too.
Okay. So I think, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dennis, yeah.
Well, it seems like the people who've done the presentation have a very clear idea of the kinds of things they'd like to create. I don't even know if it would take any staff effort to do that. I think that BPEC itself could bring, to the council, a proposed bill, could bring, you know, a proposal or write a resolution. I don't see that we would necessarily need staff to be figuring it out or putting it together. I think that this group has already figured it out. I think they have a very clear idea of what's happening here, and maybe they could just come back and bring a resolution to us. Or do you think that this needs to be sorted out in a more complex manner?
Yeah, I'm floundering. Shurius, help me.
No, I think what I was going to say was that maybe, because the mayor was talking about that they're doing a comprehensive, a new comprehensive plan, that on some level, this could be included within that plan to take place, instead of trying to hurry up this, hurry it up. I'd like for it to be thoroughly researched on some level, in the sense because of, number one, the new recreational cannabis thing that's happening, how that's going to affect, or if there is any effect with pedestrian and vehicular injuries or bicycle injuries. A lot of people don't think about that, how they are under the influence of that when they are, if they decide to drive. And I do know people, I do, I'm not going to say I know people, but I know that there are people that are driving under that influence, because I smell into the Walmart. So, and not only that, someone said something, one of you guys said something about people driving, trying to hurry up and get home from work, and that being issue, but also there's that driving while tired thing, and how there might be some kind of, that may also be influencing injuries. A lot of people commute from other parts of the county, and not everybody has a nine-to-five. Well, they say nine-to-five, but it's really nine-to-eight, or something like that, and people just may be fatigued as well. So I think that's also something that we might want to study, not to mention students pulling all-nighters and stuff like that, and how, but I'm not saying every, you know, nitpick every little thing, but there are particular situations, I think, that will affect a person's abilities to ride that bike or drive carefully. Do we need to, like someone said, do we need to put up extra lighting, extra signage? Do we need to put, I know the other night, I was just driving, and I don't mean to put anybody down, but I was driving on Windsor, and the minute I hit a particular boundary line, what I noticed was that the reflectors on the roads stopped going toward Neal Street. And I could not tell whether or not I was in one lane or the other. So maybe we need something also more like reflective paint, or something, even lineage or something like that, and all of that can be put in with the comprehensive plan as something that's relatively low budget to come to a Vision Zero thing.
Okay. Yeah, Bill?
Just a couple of comments on, it's a good point that the mayor made about the comprehensive plan coming up, and that will be very relevant, because the built environment does affect how people use the roads, and having safe neighborhood, walkable communities, and places to walk to, destinations near your home. Those types of things that will go into the comprehensive plan should also help improve walkability. As far as waiting and putting it, and doing it all together, I think there are some differences and different players involved. We do have a commitment from CU Public Health. Julie Pride, the director, is very interested in participating, and a lot of the Vision Zero stuff, I think, does involve the broader community outside Urbana. So I think we need to make sure we involve a lot of other players than the people that would just have input on the comprehensive plan. But I do think that they're very tightly wound together, and the Vision Zero should be considered as the comprehensive plan is developed.
I'd like to, you know, return to a sort of focus on process, because the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission gave us a set of recommendations that have three sections. And I'd like to take the prerogative of the chair to actually encourage us to consider these sections one by one and get a sense of the council. So the first one is, should we set as the official policy of the city the Vision Zero goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries by 2030? And we can't take an official action, but we could certainly say, hey, is that where we want to go?
Yes.
You had me at zero.
You had me at zero. Okay. Nobody wants to say it's anything other than zero? Okay. Section two, the council, direct the Urbana Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission to establish a Vision Zero task force. So it would be the sense of the council, again, not an official action, but do we want to ask the folks who brought this issue to us to actually establish a Vision Zero task force, which would be structured in, you know, kind of the ways that have been indicated, possibly with participation by other government bodies, by other interested and expert citizens? And I think that they've said that they're very open to input from any of us. And do we want to empower them to do that? Have they earned that vote of confidence, or that expression of confidence? Yeah? Okay.
I would certainly say so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, sounds good. And then, section three is the Vision Zero task force should explore funding options for developing a Vision Zero strategic plan, including a listing of available funding sources and options. So this would now start to get into questions of infrastructure. It would start to get into questions of, hey, where should we upgrade the road markings? Where should we upgrade the lighting? What are the ways that we should take this into account as we are doing, you know, new or revised road infrastructure? And we would really be looking, I think we're saying that we have, in this resolution, again, we can't actually do anything except make an expression, but do we want to express confidence in these guys to, you know, make, you know, start to develop this kind of actual strategic plan?
Seems like that would be a primary directive of such a task force.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Eric, the other thing?
Do we, so, I don't think we can make a motion. Can we do a motion? It's a discussion item.
No actions.
You can direct Bill, as chair of BPEC, to go off and develop these things. You're not, it's, the action is...
Do you do that through a motion?
Yeah, you can move to do these things, and it's not, it's not like you're taking final action or anything. You want them to bring you back a resolution for Vision Zero, develop a task force, they're going to be reporting back to you. And I don't know if Kurt wants to, Kurt's nodding his head in agreement, so this is just like giving direction to staff.
Okay.
BPEC is the Urbana Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, so they have to come back. They will be advising council in the future.
Okay. So we believe now that it's legal and appropriate from the experts at the two ends of our tables, so would be happy for a motion.
Okay, I'll move. The council direct BPEC to come forward with a resolution adopting as the official policy of the city, the Vision Zero goal is zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries by 2030, and implement the other recommendations of BPEC.
In the interest of not driving too tired this evening, I will second that.
Any further discussion, which I would actually discourage? Okay. Mary Alice always thinks I'm going to get in real trouble at some point. She's always, oh, don't say that! But she's not here tonight, so she's only calling in. So all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Nobody dares oppose. And this being the last item on the agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.